I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, May 22, 2018, and this is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Let's see, Mayor Protim, do you have some announcements today?
I do, I have a couple.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to recognize the Prescott Fire Department and CATMA for the wonderful job that they did these past few weeks keeping our community safe. Second, I would like to recognize our citizens, what is it, what are you going to say, Academy, Academy, our citizens academy, and Tyler Goodman has worked tirelessly on this. We're going to start this in June, July, thank you, in July. There'll be 25 participants. I understand we already have 40 applicants, and it will be a seven-week course from 5:30 to 7:30 every Thursday night for about seven weeks to just really learn about the city. So we're very excited about getting that going, and thank you, Tyler. And finally, I'd like to address Cowboy in a Storm. This is, this piece was presented to the city by Ed Riley, probably, I want to say, like last June. Ed came in with the original piece that was done by George Fippen. It was George Fippen's final piece that he created, and it's about 18 inches high. And so then, due to the generosity of the Ron James or Harold James Family Trust and Jim Chamberlain with Sun State, we have, they have now created a magnificent bronze that's going to go in the middle of the Fippen Roundabout. It's just an amazing piece. So here it is, on the right with the mayor, and Ed Riley was, owns Bronzemouth, and they're the ones that created this masterpiece. And here it is in clay, and now it's finished, it's in bronze, and on Saturday morning at 11 o'clock, we are going to make history. We're going to unveil this bronze at the courthouse. So in the plaza, at the courthouse, 11 o'clock, everybody's invited to come. It will just be truly a moment in history. So just welcoming all of our citizens to join us, 11 o'clock, Saturday morning, at the plaza, courthouse plaza, and watch this unveiling. So I think it's just really, just magnificent. And then, within a short while, it will be going out to the Fippen, to be put in the roundabout, to welcome guests to our city for a couple of thousand years. So it is, I'm, as you can tell, I'm very excited about it, so hope you can join us. And then, finally, I'd like to welcome my pastor, Whitney Walters, from Willow Hills Baptist Church. Whitney, thank you for coming.
Let's stand for the invocation pledged led by Councilman Good.
Father, we come before you today, and we thank you, Lord, for a nation that we have the freedom to elect those who govern us and have a say in our government, and, Lord, we just lift those before you today, the mayor, the council. We pray, Lord, that you would watch over them, that you would give them wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you join me in pledging allegiance to the greatest nation on earth? I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Whitney. Thank you, Councilman Good. Let's, please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protim Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl is excused, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Cindy. Let's do proclamations, please.
Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2018.
I love motorcycles. Just got back from a fabulous ride over in eastern Arizona and western New Mexico, and so I don't think I need that. Come on down.
This is my first time doing this.
Okay. The proclamation is for Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2018. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across Arizona and our nation, and whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of special skills developed through accommodation of training and experience, the use of good judgment, well, most of the time, and a thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements, and whereas it is especially important that the residents of Arizona be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas all highway users are being encouraged to safely share the roadway throughout Arizona. Now therefore, Greg Mangarelli, the mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim May 2018 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Prescott, and encourage all residents to do their part to increase awareness in our community. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And just a real quick, you know, you've probably noticed a lot more motors, probably noticed a lot more motorcycles out there now that the weather's getting better, which means, please be aware, and we'll watch out for you as well. And this is a great destination from people all over the country. I moved here from northern California because it's just gorgeous here, and we love riding here. So, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sishka. Next proclamation.
National Public Works Week, May 20 through 26, 2018.
Let's get everybody up here, don't be shy.
Wow.
Yeah, impressive.
Quite the crew.
Thank you all for making time out of your busy day to come in here for this proclamation. It really is an honor for me to recognize public works. You know, many times I think, we think of police and fire, and they do a great job in our city, they're on the front lines, they're the ones that really are the touchpoints that we get to see, and they, they come help us when we're in trouble or have a need. These folks make sure when you turn the tap or flush the toilet that it works, and it's, it's sometimes a real behind-the-scenes job, I believe, that we kind of take for granted. And today, we want to recognize your work and the importance, the important role that you play in our city. So, this is National Public Works Week, May 20 to 26, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and safety, high quality of life and well-being of the citizens of Prescott. And whereas this infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our city's streets, water, wastewater, solid waste, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is the, is in the public interest for the citizens of Prescott to gain knowledge of and understanding of the public works projects and programs in the community. Now therefore, I, Greg El Mangarelli, mayor of the city of Prescott, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through May 26 as National Public Works Week, to recognize the contributions which public works staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you. Craig's gonna share a speech with us today, right Craig? Short, alright.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Manager, for this proclamation. This week is about the men and women that provide the many services that public works represents. Today, we have a small group of our dedicated staff that represent the city of Prescott through these services. So on a daily basis, these services are uncounted in all walks of life, through the streets, traffic signals, water, wastewater, trash collection, recycling, environmental, engineering, and administrative support. So, thank you all for everything you do.
Anything we need to pull from the consent agenda, or the council would like to pull? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7E.
Second. We have a motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Let's move on to item eight.
Mayor and Council, the item before you is a public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for the Palace Restaurant and Saloon located at 120 South Montezuma Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and has been, and is being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, the application has been posted at the location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Yes. Come on up. This is a very, very important restaurant saloon for us here in the city. It's highlighted many times in recently the Arizona Republic, as you know, and we really appreciate you taking new ownership, and it's, it's a, it's a great fixture in Whiskey Row, so thank you.
You're welcome. If I may say, when me and my wife moved here a little over a year and a half ago, we had been in the palace many, many times, enjoyed it thoroughly. It's a very iconic, very important aspect of this town, and so we wanted to make sure that it stayed local. We want to preserve its integrity and everything that's going on and make it even better than what it is now. So, we want to thank you for your support, and you guys are all welcome to come on and enjoy yourselves there. So, thank you so very much.
Well, thank you. Thanks for continuing the tradition and being passionate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can move to close the public hearing at this time?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you. And then, another motion?
Mayor, I move to approve for our liquor license application number 17702 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for the Palace Saloon and Restaurant, location at 120 South Montezuma Street.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
Alright, let's move on to item 8B.
Mayor and Council, there are three Series 15 event liquor licenses requests for your consideration. The first is the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona, holding a 4th of July downtown fireworks celebration, located at 300 South Granite Street on Wednesday, July 4th, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The second application is by the Prescott Farmer's Market for the Farm-to-Table Dinner, located at 150 South Montezuma Street on Sunday, August 19th, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And the third application is by the Prescott Regulators and their shady ladies to hold the shootout on Whiskey Row, located at 300 South Granite Street on Saturday, July 28th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Sunday, July 29th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Thank you, Cindy. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to forward Special Event Liquor License Applications 8B1 through 8B3 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with recommendation of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. Item 9A.
Item A, Approval of Donation Agreement with the Prescott Pickleball Association for the construction of four additional pickleball courts at Pioneer Park.
Afternoon, Council. Seems like I was just here a couple hours ago, that's because I was, and so were you. Yeah, I guess it's still the same here, isn't it? The Prescott Pickleball Association, through the Recreation Services Department, is seeking approval to enter into a donation and dollar-for-dollar match agreement with the city of Prescott to build four additional pickleball courts at Pioneer Park. The city's contribution would be $30,000, and the funding would come out of the Acker Trust Fund. On April 11th, 2017, the city of Prescott entered into a previous donation agreement with the Prescott Pickleball Association to construct eight courts at Pioneer Park. The total construction cost for that project was $174,000, with the city contributing $25,000 out of bed tax, and the Prescott Pickleball Association fundraising for the balance. On June of 2017, the courts were open to the public, and on July 12th, the first tournament was held with 208 participants, 143 of those were from outside the area, including two from Canada and one from Australia. The courts are seeing a lot of use, we're seeing about 80 players a day on the average, and that's trending up now that the weather's a little bit better. The membership in the Prescott Pickleball Association continues to grow, it's currently at about 180 players that are part of their group, and in, using the formula established by the National Association for Sports Commissioners, we estimated the economic impact from that one tournament to be between $200,000 and $250,000. The unique thing about pickleball, and it's maybe not always going to be this way, but the majority of those tournaments include some play during the week. As you all know, one of our goals for creating more sales tax revenue through visitation is always to focus on midweek and shoulder season. Pickleball accomplishes at least part of that. The proposal in front of you today is very similar to the one to use, used to construct the courts in 2017, with Prescott Pickleball Association being responsible for fundraising, design, construction, project administration, all necessary permits, building supplies, and material for building the courts. As provided by the donation agreement, the city will have final plan approval, and one of the primary goals, as always, will be to keep the maintenance costs as low as possible. Under this proposal, the city would be responsible for the site grading, probably about an $8,000 in-kind value for that. It's a pretty flat lot already, and we have the equipment and the skill readily available to do that. If approved, the requested funding would come out of the Acker Trust Fund, which is set aside for parks projects and music programs, especially those for children. On May 3rd of 2018, this request was presented to the Acker Trust Board and received unanimous vote to recommend approval to the city council. We estimate the annual maintenance cost to be approximately $2,200, and with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or Peg Travers with the Pickleball Association is here too.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, Joe, thank you for your work on this. I would just like to ask that Peg Travers to stand up, because I will tell you, without Peg's exuberance and enthusiasm, what she has done for our city, raising $150,000 for the first eight courts is amazing. So, Peg, thank you and your group.
How girl, Peg.
Thank you.
Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council liaison to the Acker Trust Board, I just want to emphasize that this allocation for this, these additional pickleball courts is a more appropriate funding source than the previous allocations that came out of the general fund. I think for most people in Prescott, they're familiar with Acker Night, and they kind of associate Acker and Acker facilities with music. But I did want to emphasize that J.S. Acker's trust specifically is used for the purposes of improving and perpetually maintaining parks, and for the purpose of promoting music, all for the use and benefit of the public. So, I think we need to see more of a balance of allocations from the trust, and I think using this for improving our parks and maintaining them is, is an appropriate use of those funds, and it does not impact our general fund revenues. So, I certainly support it. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Yes, I'd just like to say, to just set the record straight, the $25,000 that we donated initially came from bed tax, because we thought that was appropriate, because it helped bring tourism, not from general fund. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move to approve Donation Agreement with the Prescott Pickleball Association and the allocation of $30,000 out of the Acker Trust Fund.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you, Joe. I guess you're back up again. Did we mention Joe's the man of the year?
Yeah. One more time.
Nauseum.
What did you say, Mayor?
Nauseum. If anybody gets nominated, just say no. Actually, it's an honor, I appreciate it. We live in a great community.
Yes. Item 9B, please.
Award of City Contract to National Golf Foundation for an Economic Impact Benefit Analysis of Antelope Hills Golf Course.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A little background, as most of you know, Antelope Hills is a city-owned 36-hole golf complex that includes food and beverage operations. Currently, we have a management agreement with Billy Casper Golf that manages the business operations of Antelope Hills, while we're responsible for the maintenance of the courses. The contract with Billy Casper Golf is set to expire May of next year, so in order for us to make better business decisions moving forward, such as operating models, debt, retirement debt, addressing our debt, future capital expenditures, staff felt it would be important to have an understanding of the economic impact and benefit of Antelope Hills on the community. In February 2018, our department advertised a request for a statement of qualifications from interested consulting firms. On March 1st, we received five responses. After review by a city-led review committee, the National Golf Foundation was chosen as the most qualified. The National Golf Foundation is recognized as an industry leader in golf facility economic consulting. They have an extensive list, especially in Arizona, all over the country, really, and other countries as well, but I thought, relevant to Arizona, the cities of Phoenix, Yuma, Tempe, Oro Valley, Gilbert, and then, of course, in 1990, they also performed one for the state of Arizona. So they're, they're well-educated in the state of Arizona and the golf economy in the state of Arizona. As a part of their project, we broke out their tasks into three tasks. Task one is project coordination and site visit. They'll come here and tour the golf courses, and the humanities, meet with the key golf course operators, operating staff, including myself, the general manager of Billy Casper Golf, our superintendent for maintenance out there, and then obtain the necessary background and issues related to both the physical plant and operations. They'll also collect the relevant data from the city, financial records, our census and demographic, activity reports, and plans for any proposed capital spending. In addition to that, they'll also review our general plan, so they're familiar with our goals going forward. Task two will be to collect stakeholder input. They'll meet with various golf course stakeholders and constituents to gain opinions, gauge opinions in the operation, and gain context for the economic impact analysis. They'll conduct meetings with city administration, like finance, recreation services, community outreach, to get their perspective on the golf enterprise fund. And then they'll also discuss the non-economic qualitative benefits, such as quality of life, the health aspects, preservation of green space, the environmental, and then, I think this is important, the attraction of individuals, like retirees and businesses that are making relocation decisions. I run across that quite a bit when I'm out at the golf course, and so that will also be, that objective will be accomplished through phone interviews and meeting with people. Task three will be to put together the economic impact and cost-benefit analysis. They'll break it into two columns, direct contribution to the golf facilities, such as employment and wages, gross sales and revenues, sales tax, local spending on supplies and equipment, we do try to shop local as much as we can, construction impacts related to capital improvements, and funds raised during charity-related golf events, and then the secondary impacts, which would be rounds played by out-of-town visitors, the spending associated with that, and those types of things, and then, of course, the estimation of effect on real estate values. I think one of the interesting things about Antelope Hills and its geographic positioning is that it's right out in the middle of our future growth and our annexations that we've recently accomplished. So there will be a lot more homes around there that can contribute to Antelope Hills. So I just thought it was important that we gain all the information that we can gain moving forward in order for us to make the best business decisions that we can make. As far as deliverables, they'll be in frequent communication with us, the city, golf course, city administration. They'll do the onsite meetings, they'll have discussions in between on their preliminary findings, and then finally, a written report of their findings, including support documentation and a concise executive summary. They'll give us a draft version, and we will comment on that. And then finally, they, if the city would like, they will make a formal presentation of their findings to the city council, and then, of course, they'll be able to answer any questions, as deemed appropriate by the city of Prescott. I've had a pretty fair amount of communication with National Golf Foundation through this process. They are highly held, held in high regard in the golf industry, and have done a lot of these, so I am happy to bring this to you for your consideration. And the funding is available in the amount not to exceed $28,000. It's available in the FY '18 budget from the bed tax fund. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilman Blair.
And to answer your question, yes, I would like a presentation. And along with that, I think it would be important for the public as well, well as folks up here, to give us some history on how the north course was built, and on what land, and about the use of the golf course in particular. There's always been the conversation about, why don't we do something different than have a golf course out there? And I think we are precluded by law because of the property values and association with the homeowners and the homeowners' association, that it will always have to be a golf course, if I'm correct. But to provide a little bit of history on both courses would be probably pretty good.
Yeah, Councilman Blair, thank you for bringing that up. In addition to this, this is a, there's a series of steps that we're taking, moving into our last year of our contract with our management company. This is one of those, another one of those is going to be different operating models, you know, what, what options are available for us to consider, is what we're doing the right thing to do, or are there other operating models that we can do, along with a little bit of history about the golf course. The golf course is, as far as its role in our community, because it is a community asset. So all those things will be shedding a lot more light on in this coming fiscal year, so we can make some decisions moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, listened to a lot of lip service about the golf course over the years, but I kind of liken the golf course to the rodeo grounds, which we got a lot of lip service over that, too. You know, community infrastructure, which the golf course is a piece of our infrastructure, the rodeo ground's a piece of our infrastructure, sidewalks going around, the plaza's a piece of our infrastructure, things like that, and I think it's incumbent on the city to make sure that our infrastructure's taken care of correctly. That doesn't necessarily mean we need to run the golf course if we have a competent contractor, or the rodeo grounds, if we have a competent contractor, et cetera. But that belongs to the citizens and the taxpayers of the city of Prescott, and we need to have absolute oversight on what's going on with what the citizens of this community have invested in over the years. And would the community be better off without a municipal golf course? I would argue the point, no. Any more than we would be better off without a municipal library. You know, you get all this stuff about we're wasting money on the wants rather than on the needs. Well, that's not necessarily true if you look at the amount of tax revenue and sales that come into the city because of some of the infrastructure we've invested in. Would we have the revenue coming into the city coffers to pay for our police, our fire, et cetera? We don't have the ability to rate pay, like we do with water and sewer, but we do have a general fund. And the money that comes in from the amenities that we market ourselves as goes into the general fund and gives us the ability to provide top-level services to the residents that live here. So I appreciate, like Blair, the idea that you're going to do a cost-benefit analysis, because there's more to it than just the number of jobs that are held. It's about the number of people that come up here that wouldn't come up here if we didn't have that golf course, or that eat in the restaurants because they're here, drink in the bars, whatever the case is, stay in the hotels, blah de blah de blah. So, really, I think that it's time that we look at some of our assets, and we mark our assets for what they truly are. They're municipally-owned pieces of infrastructure that we have the obligation to the taxpayers and the residents to make sure they're kept in good, pristine condition. Doesn't necessarily mean we need to run them, we don't need to have a bunch of professional golfers, or a bunch of professional cowboys, or any of that other stuff, but you know what, we do provide the infrastructure for it to happen here in the city.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Councilman Good.
Mayor, thank you. I'm also a proponent of evidence-based decision-making. And I think there's a lot of concern about the proponents who feel that the golf course is an extremely valuable municipal asset, and then there are other people that may not agree with that. But rather than just deal with anecdotal opinions, I think it's valuable to invest in a study that will identify exactly, or to as much credible information as possible to show exactly what the golf course means to the city, to its revenues, to its sales taxes, and its contribution to the general fund both now and in the future. So I think it's a modest amount to invest, and it's information that I think is really essential for us to plan for the future. So I support it.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2018-152.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Joe. Let's move on to item nine C.
This is a two-part for your consideration. The first is adopt resolution number 2018-1641 of the City Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled City of Prescott procurement code. The second is the adopt ordinance number 2018-1612, excuse me, replacing city code Title I, Chapter 1-27, City of Prescott procurement code in its entirety, and replacing it with a new City of Prescott procurement code, providing for penalties and allowing for severability.
Thank you, Cindy. Mark Woodfall, Budget and Finance Director, we had a workshop on this two weeks ago, so we're not going to, unless you would like, we could go through the whole detail of the procurement code. Council discussed it at that workshop. There was talk that we wanted to have a little more details on what was included in the bids and the consideration as far as lifespan, warranty, repair costs, replacement costs. So the ordinances and resolutions in front of you adopt the code as presented two weeks ago with the addition of the wording that's up on the screen from our legal department to include those in the acquisition. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Good.
Well, thank you, Mark. That was one of my concerns. And I think specifying some of these components when we're looking at acquisition is important. And I think this pretty much covers my concern. So thank you.
Great, thanks.
Other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2018-1641.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
And entertain another motion here.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-162.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Mark. Let's move on to item nine D.
Award city contract to Sunland Inc. Asphalt and Seal Coating for the Virginia Street Pavement Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Orson, Public Works. This item before you today is to do some rehabilitation to a section of Virginia Street between Gurley and Willis. There's been a history of some waterline failures in that area that have tore up the road pretty good. And we, it's at a point where we should just replace the asphalt in that whole area. We chose to use the JOC, or Job Order Contracting, method of procurement for this project. Due to the timing, we needed to get the project done while the school, Latihara, was on summer break. And to get that done during the summer, we needed to use this procurement process. The bid from the contractor is $137,504.72. We added a contingency because on the job order contracting process, there is no contingency in their bids. So we need to make sure that, in case there's anything that comes up, we're covered. And assuming it's approved today, the notice to proceed will be just after Memorial Day. Yes, Memorial Day. And they'll be finished in time for school to start in August. If there's any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Let's see, Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you very much. Steve, you said this asphalt deterioration is because of water leakage?
That's correct, yes.
Has anything been done to fix the water leakage so we don't continue to go down this path year after year?
Yes, the waterline problems have been fixed in their entirety, and now it's time to finish the surface.
Thank you for making that clear.
Versus the other way.
All right.
Other questions or comments for Steve? If not, we'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I remove to recommend approval of city contract number 2018-226.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, let's move on to item nine E.
Approval of Amendment One to Capital Improvements LLC for the Small Water Maines Replacement Dexter Neighborhood Phase Three Project.
Figured a picture would be good for this one. Sorry, Mark. Okay. All right, this item here is a contract amendment for an existing construction contract. This is our Small Water Maines Phase Three in the Dexter neighborhood area. It looks much better on this drawing here, but there's blue lines that cover a majority of the area here on Campbell, Lincoln, Ruth, and Byrd, and part of Damrin down in this area, and Comfort down to Sonora. That was part of the original Water Main project. During the design of this project, it had been determined that in the area of, for this project, the red area along Damrin, a part of Lincoln, and a part of Home Street, which is this little stub on that side there, needed to have the roadway reconstructed. We did relook at that during the design process and wanted to get the Water Main project moving. We separated out the road project. During the last few months, we right-sized that part of the project, took out a lot of the concrete curbs that were included and some other drainage elements, and made a more modest improvement project. And we are recommending that the contract to the current contractor be amended to complete this work. The contractor has mobilized working the area. This work is similar to some of the other work that they've done on the Phase Three project. And to get the timing of the work done in an efficient manner and the most cost-effective for the city, over 75% of the work items that are part of this amendment were part of the original contract. So we had unit prices that were very favorable for us to get the work done. So we chose to amend the current contract. Mainly, the project is asphalt replacement, some valley gutter, concrete to better control the drainage, much less intrusive than the curbs that were considered, and some minor drainage work at the south end of Damrin to control the flow of water. And with that, I'll have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I'm just curious, if you went out to bid as an individual separate project, how much approximately would this cost?
Most likely more.
I hope so.
And the reason being...
My point is, I'm just trying to illustrate to the public how much savings are involved.
Correct. When, very good question. We've been thinking about that ourselves on how to most efficiently get this project out. When the bids came in for the previous project, the second lowest bidder was over $800,000 higher for the prime work. We're using the same unit pricing that we got on the low bid for this amendment. So we felt that there was a significant cost savings to the general public. For example, the mobilization, which is usually about, on this type of project for this contract, about $70,000. The mobilization cost was $10,000. So it was a significant...
That's very significant and a good decision for tax dollars at work.
Absolutely.
Will this complete the Small Water Main project in the Dexter neighborhood?
Yes, it will.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2018-005A1.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Let's move on to item nine F.
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1613, amending Prescott city code Title I, Administrative Chapter 1-20, Personnel Section 1-20-15 Leave Policy Regarding the Maximum Accrual of Paid Time Off.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Melissa Fosik with the Human Resources Department. We are here today to seek your approval on aligning our paid time off program with FMLA, which is our family medical leave. So I'd like to start off by giving you a little bit of our leave history. Back in 2012, and during the economic downturn, the city transitioned from a vacation and sick leave bank to a paid time off or PTO program. From 2004 to 2011, employees were able to accrue unlimited vacation and sick leave banks during that time. The unlimited leave banks, though, combined with the three-month retirement bonus payouts, definitely created a large financial liability for the city. In addition to that, with the 2003 HIPAA implementation, managing employees' sick leave usage became problematic due to health privacy laws. So we would have employees calling in sick, and the supervisors were either digging a little too far into the reasons that they were out sick. And so that became a violation of HIPAA. So the city changed to one bank of leave, again, PTO, with a 200 and 240 maximum balance. The 200 is for employees that have worked here for less than 10 years, and 240 is for those employees with 10 or more years. And the retirement bonus was modified at that time. Some of the current issues that we are running into is since 2012 and the PTO implementation, employees do not accrue enough PTO to cover family medical job protection leave or FMLA. FMLA equates to 480 hours or 12 weeks of leave. Below that kind of gives you an idea of what our accrual scale is. So for employees that have been here, brand-new to three years of service, they accrue 2.8 weeks a year. Employees with three to 10 years of service, it's 3.4 weeks a year. 10 to 15 years of service is four weeks a year. And 15-plus years of service is 4.4 weeks a year. In addition, we do have a short-term disability program, but the short-term disability program only covers employees themselves if they're out for a medical reason. So if I'm out to care for my child, or a spouse, or a family member, that short-term disability program does not cover you while you're out caring for a family member. Short-term disability does pay 66% of the employee's regular pay as well. In addition to that, the Prescott PTO maximums of 200 and 240 are no longer competitive with employers in the area. So we're looking at the town of Prescott Valley, Yavapai County. We've also looked at our peer employers that we used for our market compensation study. And we've also looked across the state of Arizona at other municipalities. One thing I wanted to add on the short-term disability is that employees do not accrue leave while they are out on short-term disability, and they are also not making retirement contributions at that time. So this will give you an idea on what the maximum accruals look like. And this is an example of a five-year employee. So if a five-year employee worked a bank all of their leave, not utilized any of their time, this is where we surveyed 20 other employers. And you'll see that there's an asterisk mark next to those employers that are the peer employers. The employers that are coded in blue are those that have a paid time off or a general leave bank. Those coded in green have a vacation leave, and the red is sick. So they offer both the vacation and the sick leave. So out of those 21 employers up there, we are definitely at the bottom of the scale there as far as providing or being competitive with the amount of leave that we're offering. Just to kind of summarize what that chart was, so 13 of those employers do provide sick and vacation. 13 of them provide unlimited sick accruals. And their vacation range is between five to 14 weeks of leave. Four of those employers on there provide 1,040 hours, which equates to 26 weeks of sick leave, and the vacation ranges from four to eight weeks. Three of the employers offer a PTO, which is one bank. They can utilize that for sick or vacation. Prescott Valley offers 10 weeks of leave, Casa Grande offers 15 weeks, and Prescott offers five weeks. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the payout amounts. Prescott, right now, we pay out the entire bank, which is, again, 200 or 240, depending on your years of service. Prescott Valley pays out the entire bank, but it's based off of longevity. Kingman, 200 hours of vacation with a max of 120 of sick. Yavapai County, 400 hours. They do not pay out sick leave. Casa Grande pays out 600, and Surprise, 560. So most of the employers will pay out the entire vacation bank, but some of them do base their payouts on the employee's longevity. So what we would like to recommend, again, is that we increase our maximum PTO accruals to align with our federal guidelines, FMLA, which equates to 12 weeks of PTO. The proposed increase to the accrual maximums would be 480 hours for all employees with the exception of fire. So how we equate this is when we look at a 40-hour work week, we multiply that by 12 weeks, that equals 480 hours. Since our fire, employees are designated on a 56-hour work week, and they need to cover a full 24-hour shift, the 56 hours times 12 weeks is 672. So that's what they would be designated at for FMLA. The payouts at the time of separation of service will remain unchanged. So with these changes, one last chart there for you. So we will, we would exceed Sedona and Prescott Valley if we are able to adjust our leave to at least 480 hours. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, I'm Melissa. And Mary, thank you for bringing this forward. I'm 100% in favor of doing this. It's, we have to be competitive. You know, we have had, we talked about this when we talked about the vision insurance. We've had a revolving door with employees. We've really made some strides with regard to our market compensation, our vision insurance. I think this is one more thing that we can do to reward our employees and to thank them for their service and hold on to them. We expect a lot of our, we looked at that graph this morning when we're doing budgets, how much we have gone down with, as far as employees in our city. And so it puts a lot more work on more people. And so I'm on for this. In fact, I would like for us to entertain the idea of donation somewhere that employees can donate some of their PTO to some that may be needed.
Mayor Protem, thank you. We are absolutely supportive of that. We can, most of the municipalities that we did survey offer that type of program, and we can build some parameters to make that happen here.
Councilman Good.
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns here. I know the Family Medical Leave Act that was signed by Bill Clinton on February 5th, 1993, which one of his first bills as he became president, was totally focused on unpaid family medical leave time off. So trying to align a paid PTO program with an unpaid PTO program is a little bit disingenuous. So trying to align a paid PTO program with an unpaid PTO program is a little bit disingenuous. How many employees have we lost to other municipalities who have stated this as a reason for leaving employment with Prescott?
I can tell you that through the exit interviews that we receive, I would say that approximately ninety-five percent of our employees rate our benefits as poor, and that is a combination of our leave program and our health insurance in general.
And how many specifically reference this issue?
They don't reference FMLA protection, but our leave banks, yes, that's an issue. They don't, employees do not feel that they have that leave bank there to support them and their family if they were to be injured on the job, or have cancer, or whatever the case may be, and they're taking leave without pay and having that financial hardship, so... But we have not had a person actually say, "I'm leaving, I'm not leaving," or "I'm leaving because of the leave program that we have in place."
In our packet here, it states that there will be no financial impact. We have had to streamline our staffing since the financial downturn, so we don't have a lot of excess employee capacity. If we have an employee that's going to be out for three months, how does the department compensate for their workload?
It's either by having staff pitch in, and they're having to pay overtime for that to happen, or oftentimes, we will hire a temporary employee to help staff and assist that. We've had people go out on maternity leave, and when we're able to plan for those, we'll hire a temporary employee to assist during that time.
So clearly, either overtime or additional temp expenses would add a financial impact to the city if we were to expand this beyond two hundred and forty hours.
And it's just hard to be able to anticipate what that figure would look like. It just all depends on how many folks that we have out on leave.
Well, I know in the private sector, FMLA is exempt for employers that have fifty or fewer employees. So it's uncommon to find this even available for unpaid time off in the small business community. I feel that it would probably put an unfair burden on the remaining employees, and we probably would not be able to service the public as efficiently as we would if we maintained our current two hundred and forty-hour benefit. However, I think I would support a bank, a volunteer bank, where other employees could offer their banked PTO for extreme circumstances. That's something I could support, but otherwise, I don't think this is a good timing to expand these benefits to employees at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm a bottom-line kind of guy. You know, the truth is, is that if we're not competitive, we're not competitive. I think that we need every single advantage we can give our employees, because realistically, we're in a very competitive, very, you know, heck, I could go to Prescott Valley, or I could go somewhere else. I understand Councilman Good's concerns, but I also think that we need to be realistic. And I think that, my question is, a question, is do you find that this is abused at all?
I think our supervisors do a good job managing it. We are so short-staffed that people are not able to even take a vacation. I just feel that employees really just want that safety net to know that them or their family members will be taken care of if there is something significant that happens, that they need to be out on leave. So I do not see that employees are abusing this.
Well, if our employees are taking care of us, I think we need to take care of our employees.
Thank you.
Councilman Larsson?
Thank you. I understand Phil's comments, and I understand Steve's. You know, this is one of those issues where, from a management standpoint, it's pretty difficult to plan, trying to run a business, not knowing how many people you're going to have, when, but you've got to make sure you plan for somebody taking up the six weeks off. You know, there's one thing, when you know they're going to take their sick leave and their paid vacation, you know what the number is, and you know that at the end of the year, if they didn't take it, you still owe them for it, all right? But to accrue it, and then hit you two, three years later and say, "Now you owe me for three years' worth of PTO," to me, that's very crippling to the bank account. So that's where I see, to me, where the problem is with this. I don't have as much problem with people being assured that they can have their time off, but to be able to, I think that the three weeks that we have right now, that they can do, they can accrue three weeks, to expand that, or six weeks, I meant, to expand that to three...
Twelve.
Twelve? Okay, well, twelve weeks, twelve months, whatever it is, is crippling, because then you do have to go out and get more people, and you do have to do different things, and I have trouble expanding it. I don't have a problem paying what we owe, recognizing who's earned what, but now to subject the rest of the employees, I do have a problem with that.
Councilman, if I can make a comment, when these employees are sick or get cancer, they're out either way. So the departments are having to chip in, they're having to put in that OT, or they're having to hire a temp either way. This will help support those employees financially when they are out and they are struggling through a difficult situation, to be able to help them financially during that time. They'll have, as long as they're smart with their leave, and they save their leave and bank it.
And I appreciate that comment, but what we don't do is we don't have to go out and hire other people now that the federal government stepped in and put out new guidelines for us regarding, in the state government, with the minimum wage stuff, where you have to pay this, and you have to pay this, and as a municipality, we have no choice. So then, all of a sudden, we're accruing a different level of expense than we were when we were hiring temporaries at a given time a year ago.
Mayor and Council, there was a question about FMLA. The city does require medical certification and/or recertification from a medical provider. It doesn't generally go into detail the what because of HIPAA, but we do allow, FMLA and city policy does allow for the city to have its own essentially independent medical exam in the case that we don't sort of agree with the person's own doctor. So it's very, I think it's very rare and very difficult to sort of forge or commit sort of some sort of fraud on FMLA, and our HR policies are very specific about that, and it's not intended to be a vacation. So this, the FMLA, I guess, use of FMLA is pretty restrictive in terms of how, whether it's allowed or not. You know, again, it's that twelve-week block for both the employee or the employee's family, so the medical certification would come from whomever needs that, needs that, or requires that leave.
John, didn't we go to like PTO so that that gave the employee the freedom to pick or choose whether they wanted to use the amount of time we gave them for either sick leave or vacation? And we don't stick our nose into that.
Well, you're right, and that switch from sick vacation to PTO was before my time, but that's right. So you have this bank of paid time off, PTO, and the basis for that, as Melissa was saying, was that it was very difficult to sort of track whether you're sick, or, you know, and it didn't jive up with some other things, with HIPAA and things like that. And on top of that, as was presented, it was unlimited sick time. So, you know, people had seven, eight hundred hours of sick time on the books. Some still do, because it didn't, once it was accrued, when we switched over to PTO, that doesn't go away. The employee earned it, the employee keeps it. So some employees actually may have, I don't know if the data shows this, but some employees may have already this four eighty, and our current, this code change says your max is the max. So four eighties, or six seventy-two, that's your max. You know, your cash out remains the same if you were to leave, so, you know, it's sort of, I guess, in one way, leveling the playing field for all employees, those that were here during the sick vacation era, and then those of us who were here during the PTO era, you know, you essentially get the same FMLA. And even if you had more than the FMLA allowed, and you stayed out more than the twelve weeks, at that point, the management makes the decision whether we're going to keep you as an employee or not. So that's your protection, is that twelve weeks of FMLA. And I could tell you, I mean, we've seen employees let go because their FMLA is up and they're still not capable of coming back to work. One correction I want to make, point out is, if someone's hurt on the job, is an industrial accident, workers' comp covers it, and it's a different application, different payment, so that, it's really not, that doesn't fall into this area, that's kind of a different analysis.
Thank you, John. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Melissa, can you put the chart back up that shows the comparison of the twenty municipalities?
This is the chart with the recommended changes.
Yes, thank you. I think this just tells the story, is that we are at the bottom, and I can tell you, I understand that you don't want to go hire a temporary, I understand that, but the cost of training an employee is a major expense to our city. So I think if we can hold on to trained employees and try to at least become more competitive, it's to our advantage as a city. So again, I think we are, we are not competitive. It's just obvious to me, look at this, and you can see that. So I think we need to be competitive, and I think, I go back to the payouts, termination remain the same, that doesn't change. So we're actually, and again, these are, these are for employees that are very ill, or for some reason, they must be out. People don't come to a job and want to stay out of a job. And so I guess, you know, I always look at the good, my glasses half-full, but I think we really need to move forward on this, so, thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Ohr. I think that people overall enjoy their jobs. They don't want to spend time away from their job. On this motorcycle ride that I was on, most of the guys who I rode with are Southwest captains, and for the guys who've retired, I have a friend who is retiring here in June, they all say they're leaving sixteen hundred trips, fourteen hundred trips, sick time on the books. They're retiring without taking that time. And so I truly do think, and it's because they enjoy flying. I think that a lot of the employees, most of the employees in the city of Prescott enjoy what they're doing and don't want to take time off. So for me, it's really not an issue.
Councilman Blair?
I don't enjoy my time working, that's why I'm here. I just have to say that I don't have so much a heartburn with what we're doing now, because I remember when I was on council, when there was unlimited PTO cash out, and that's just bizarre. I mean, that, nobody does that in their right mind and walk away and feel good about it, but we had employees that worked for the city of Prescott, they cashed out a whole year's salary, and I don't think that's what we're trying to do here, so I think the bottom line is, I would support it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to, go ahead, Steve. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1613.
Second.
We have a motion, second, please vote.
Motion passes five, excuse me, three to two?
Four to two.
Did I have four to two?
Four to two.
Somebody else's. Oh, it's up at the top, sorry. Forgive me.
Cindy, I was going to compliment you here.
I know. I left my glasses on top of my head, I'm sorry.
Well, let me just say thank you to Cindy and Frances for being here, Phil and Big Shoes and Maureen, who wasn't here, did a great job, other than that last count, but that's all right. And a little sad that we don't have a legislative update, we don't get to hear from Tyler today, it's kind of sad. Want to just mention Memorial Day weekend is coming this weekend, and I think it's a great time for all of us to remember those that have sacrificed their lives for our freedom. And I'd like to read this quote from the twenty-sixth president, Theodore Roosevelt. "No man who is not willing to bear arms and to fight for his rights can give a good reason why he should be entitled to the privilege of living in a free community." Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.